Okay. We are now convening the Planning Commission meeting of April 7, 2016. Ms. Rodriguez, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Higgins. Vice Chair Pujot.
Here.
Chair Campanella.
Here. Okay, next, we're going to discuss some preliminary matters. Ms. Galarte, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Are there any announcements or appeals?
We have received some appeals of the Planning Commission. We received an appeal of the Planning Commission on 1427 San Miguel Avenue. And we've also received an appeal of the Planning Commission on 118 North Milpa Street. Both will be heard by the City Council.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is review and consideration in action on draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions, and we have a number of them to do today. What I'm going to suggest, and with Ms. Rodriguez, okay, I think I'm going to group these into the maybe blocks of four, which would contain the minutes of a certain date, blocks of three, rather, and then resolutions with them of that date, and we'll discuss those one at a time. We'll go down each date, minutes and resolutions. Okay. And then we just have to keep track a little bit because there were some commissioners who were absent at some of these meetings. Keep track of that. Okay. So, number one is, we're going to go to the minutes of March 3, 2016, the PC Resolution number 6-16 and 7-16. And I ask for any questions or comments about the minutes from the planning commissioners. Okay, hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes and the two resolutions of March 3?
To approve?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Now we go to March 10. We have minutes in March 10, Resolution 8-16 and 9-16. On 9-16, I believe Mr. Jordan and Mr. Thompson were absent.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'll let Julie figure that out. I'll just say aye with the rest of them. But I wasn't here for the end of the meeting for the minutes, but I was here for San Miguel and participated in that, and I wasn't here for the resolution. So I get the one in the middle, I think, so...
Right. The record would just reflect that you were abstained from that portion and that reso.
Absent.
And I watched the remainder of the meeting on video that I had to leave for.
Okay, so...
I'm qualified to vote.
You are qualified? Okay. So if, Ms. Rodriguez, we have then Commissioner Jordan abstaining from the Resolution 8-16? Is that correct?
No.
I'm sorry, 9-16, pardon me, 9-16, and then we'll vote on it. Then I can vote. We can vote right now on the March 10 minutes, Resolution 8-16 and Resolution 9-16, unless there are any changes or corrections that someone has.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Moving along, we have the minutes of March 17, Resolutions 10-16 and 11-16. And on these three items, everyone was present. Any questions, comments, changes on the minutes and the two resolutions?
Move their approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Lastly, March 18. This was a special meeting on the NZO that we had, and Commissioners Pujot, Jordan, and Thompson were absent, unless anyone watched the video or wants to be included. We would have three abstentions and four commissioners voting on the minutes of the March 18, 2016 meeting. Any comments on the minutes from the commissioners that are voting? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
May I approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll have any comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on an item not on this agenda, not on the Hitchcock property? Okay, good. Do we have a speaker slip from this? I have a speaker slip coming up next from Mr. Orr, and you have another one here. Okay, have you filled out a speaker slip for the next item? Would you do so, please, and give it to Ms. Galarte? Thank you. Okay, having no speaker slips or anyone wanting to make a public comment on a matter not on the agenda, I will close the public comments. Okay, now we will move on to a new item, 350-352 Hitchcock Way. And there's a number of findings and approvals that were being asked to make today, and I will turn it over to Mr. Vermont.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. The item before you today is the so-called Motor Village Auto Dealership at 350-352 Hitchcock Way. The purpose of the meeting is to consider the approval of a tentative subdivision map to divide a 5.8 acre parcel into two parcels, a 2.8 acre parcel for the proposed project and a three acre parcel for the existing Lexus dealership. Also, a development plan to construct 36,752 square feet of non-residential floor area and a planned development zone, development plan, for a new automobile dealership. And I'll go through each of those independently as we go forward. My presentation will focus on the project description. I'll give some background on both the project site and the current project history. I'll go over each of the three applications, the environmental review finding, and also staff's recommendation at the end. So the proposed project, as I said, is to divide a 5.8 acre lot into two new lots. It would also demolish an 18,866 square foot structure, which mostly open service bays, but that includes 29,000 square foot of growth management program floor area. And it would construct a new 36,752 square foot two-story auto dealership consisting of showrooms, parts, and vehicle storage and vehicle service. The proposed project site is shown here on this map. It's about the middle of Hitchcock Way near Lorrata. It's bound on the north by the Franciscan Villas. And to the east is the Peach Grove Neighborhood and Lexus and other auto dealerships are to the south. This is the site plan for the proposed project. The Maserati dealership is principally oriented towards Hitchcock. And there are two curb cuts to access the property. One is a shared curb cut with the Lexus dealership. The other is exclusive on the north side. The customer parking would be in the front. The employee parking is on either side. And then there's, toward the rear is the parking for service vehicles, vehicles that are being served. At the very back is inventory, storage, and then there's also valet parking of customer vehicles on the second floor, and I'll show that in a minute. Here's the first floor plan with the showrooms at the front and offices, also service offices here. The parts warehousing and the front office are here. And toward the back, we have the service bays that are all interior to the building. At the very back, we have two detail bays for detailing of vehicles, and this is the ramp that extends to the second floor. And the ramp then continues up here. We have the valet parking spaces for customers parking. There's an area identified for light maintenance on the second floor. And then there's also the second floor showroom to the front and offices. And there's an outdoor lounge over the southern end of the property. Here are the elevations that were presented to the Architectural Board of Review. The bottom one would be the view from Hitchcock. These windows that are on the south elevation would actually be covered by the wall of the portico chair that's over here. And then on the north elevation, the same thing is true. These windows are actually behind this portico chair. And then at the rear is the ramp that I described to access the second floor. At the site visit on Tuesday, there was some discussion about the parking requirements. So I've broken out the floor area by uses and the required parking for each, also which were designated toward customer use and which for employees. So we have 23 designated employee parking spaces and a total of 99 parking spaces on the site. The site was originally, the lot, the 5.8 acre lot was originally created in 1966 with construction of an auto dealership at that site approved by the County of Santa Barbara. In 1973, that land was annexed by the City of Santa Barbara. And in the late 2000s, auto dealership operation at that site discontinued. The southern portion came to be operated by Lexus of Santa Barbara. In 2014, the City Planning Department received an application for a tentative subdivision map to divide this lot into two new lots. And in 2015, we received an application for a development plan to develop a new dealership on the northern lot. Staff's recommendation was to combine those two applications as a single project. And Public Works staff also recommended the inclusion of a 15-foot minimum easement for a future bicycle pedestrian path across the property. The applicant volunteered that, and that was accepted by City Council back in December. The purpose of that easement is to facilitate a future bicycle pedestrian trail that was identified in the Upper State Street Study as a longer-term transportation improvement. That project isn't likely to occur in the very near future. It remains a longer-term project because there are still missing easement connections to complete that entire project. There's no design or any sort of outreach or environmental review has been conducted, and that's not in the city's capital improvement plan, so there's no budget for that program as yet. But there is now one fewer hurdle to getting that project constructed someday. And here's the exhibit from the Upper State Street Study showing the longer-term transportation improvement consisting of a pedestrian bicycle trail. And this is the portion that was dedicated in December. So I'd like to talk about each of those applications briefly. I think that some of them are a little more familiar to us at the Planning Commission than others. The standard of review for a tentative subdivision map is that it is consistent with applicable plans and policies, that the site is physically suitable for development, that is to say it's not entirely submerged or a steep slope, that it provides reasonable access to natural resources, if there are such natural resources in the area, and that the project wouldn't discharge pollutants into a sewer system. So here's the tentative subdivision map that was submitted to staff, and it shows in dark line the changes from the previous subdivision map. And in faint line are the existing conditions and the existing easements. So those carry forward into the new map, but they're obviously at this scale very difficult to read. With respect to plan and policy consistency, in page six and seven of the staff report, there's more detail about the consistency with the general plan. The general plan designation for the site is commercial, medium-high residential, which this project would be consistent with. And so staff's determination is it's potentially consistent. That's ultimately Planning Commission's discretion. Now, with respect to the development plan, the standard of review is compliance with the zoning ordinance, consistency with the principles of sound community planning, that the project is compatible with the neighborhood as based on the project compatibility analysis, and that it's consistent with the traffic management strategy for that area. So, starting with the zoning, it is both in the one-family residence E3 and the planned development PD zones. The planned development zone is designed to create a lot of flexibility for land uses that are unique or perhaps difficult to plan for programmatically, so one-off projects. And automobile sales and service is expressly allowed in the PD zone. Additionally, it requires the allocation of non-residential square footage under the growth management program. Back in June, City Council allocated 39,000 square feet of non-residential floor area to this project under the community benefit floor area category. There are three subcategories: there are community priority, economic benefit, and planned development, new automotive sales project. And that third one is where this project fell. So the project compatibility analysis was completed at ABR on August 31. They referred this project to Planning Commission, making those findings, requesting that the applicant further study landscaping, specifically some palms at the front, and also texture and color on the second floor toward the back, where it would be visible from the Peach Grove With respect to the traffic management strategy, it is in the Upper State Street area where planned development of automobile sales is expressly allowed. Transportation staff reviewed the project and found that this automobile dealership is consistent with the traffic model assumption for an automobile dealership at that site, so there wasn't a need to further analyze the traffic impacts. Now, the planned development plan has a separate standard of review. That is that the project provides sufficient setbacks, appropriate hours of operation, that outdoor lighting does not create a nuisance for the neighborhood, and that the massing and architecture is compatible with the neighborhood. Let's go through each of those briefly. There's a 10-foot front and 6-foot interior setback in the E3 zone. The proposed project would meet the 10-foot front setback as designed. The interior setbacks would be 22 feet to the north and 40 feet to the east and 0 feet to the south. Now, this is where I get back to the planned development zone flexibility, where you can have a 0-foot setback in that zone, and that it's oriented toward the other auto dealership and away from the other uses seems appropriate. Now, the hours of operation, determining how that's compatible with the neighborhood is a little difficult. These are the hours that are proposed by the applicant. They're consistent with the other auto dealerships in the area, actually opening slightly later and they're on weekdays than the Lexus dealership. With respect to lighting, the applicant submitted a photometric plan. It's very difficult to read at this scale, I apologize, but the, those little green dots on the residential side are either 0-foot candles or .1-foot candles, which is not a significant amount of lighting. That's less than moonlight for the .1. And all those, the ones that do have a reading are on the Hitchcock side. They're not on any of these structures. With respect to finding the project compatible with the neighborhood, it's consistent with the prior use of an auto dealership and service area at that site. The applicant's also proposed a number of features that would reduce noise by locating service inside the building and using a paging system to contact employees on-site rather than public address. They're also proposing to do loading and unloading off-street rather than in Hitchcock as some other dealerships do, and providing employee parking off-street as required. As I mentioned briefly with the traffic management strategy, the project falls within the assumptions in the general plan EIR for an auto dealership at that site. And it did not trigger any need for a new traffic model run, so the project is consistent with the general plan EIR's assumptions for general plan build-out. Therefore, no further environmental review is required pursuant to SEQA Guidelines 15183. We received public comment on this project. Since the notice went out, the concerns very generally were about landscape maintenance, employees parking on streets, and issues associated with bicycle pedestrian access on the dedicated easement. To address the landscape issue, staff's recommending that we add to our prior recommendation, Condition B9, specifically articulating that the property owner is responsible for the management and maintenance of landscaping on both of those parcels, on that 40-foot mound at the rear and the 22-foot easement on the north side. And I've included that in that handout. So including that, staff's recommendation is that Planning Commission make the findings on pages 10 and 11 of the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval as revised. At this point, I can answer any questions, or if you'd like to move on to the applicant presentation. Thanks.
Okay, I think we'll move on to the applicant right now. And we normally allow 15 minutes. Would you be able to do with that amount of time?
Less, hopefully. Hello, everyone. My name is Maru Haclense. I'm with Suzanne Elig Planning and Permitting Services. Our whole team is here to address any questions you may have, and I'll just skim over those points that you have already gone over. And thank you, Mr. Vermont, for your presentation. Just got to make sure my little clicker thing is working. It almost knows. There we go. Okay, so, again, this is our project request, a tentative subdivision map, development plan, and another development plan approval for the PD zone, site aerial. This is the existing Lexus dealership on what would be Lot 1 or the southern portion of the lot. And this is a proposed Lot 2, where the new dealership is proposed to go. So these are a couple pictures of the existing condition. It's been vacant probably since the 90s, and it's being used for car inventory, storage of adjacent dealerships. This would be the shared access driveway that would be formalized with a covenant of easement with the project. And going in over again, this is the new two-story dealership building with interior service bays with roll-up doors that will be closed the majority of the time. We have over 25,000 square feet of landscaping with 36 new trees, including the 40-foot vegetated buffer that is approximately 90 feet away. The building is 90 feet away from the rear property line. 99 spaces with 16 bike spaces. This is site drainage going towards the front edge of the site into two storm chambers, as well as the easement that Mr. Vermont discussed. There were requests for renderings to show the proposed project, and granted, this is very horizontal, so I've broken it up into some components. So this is the northern portion of the site facing Hitchcock, going a little towards down. And then keep an eye on that red car to the right as we move down to the service portico chair and the adjacent Lexus dealership building to the right. Going into some project operations, there's a lot of transportation demand management components that are both part of the project description and as the draft conditions of approval, including a break room, shower facilities, lockers, electric vehicle charging stations, parking, shuttle service, guaranteed ride home, and all these things to help facilitate transportation. No PA system, paging system, which I think is a huge plus for the project. And again, 0.0-foot candles along the residential sides of the property and just a little bit over the front property line due to the new streetlights that the project will replace. Again, onsite vehicle delivery to the front of the site, which will happen before operating hours. And then the landscape maintenance component with new vegetation along the rear of the property and the front throughout the site. New shrub and infill vegetation in the berm area, cleanup and ongoing maintenance of that area, and again, trees proposed against the building. So these are the story poles, and I wanted to really emphasize that while the story poles to the far left are for that canopy element, the real building massing doesn't start until approximately 80 feet away from the northern property line, which is significant considering that the existing building is right now 10 feet away. So I really felt that was important to emphasize because those story poles can seem like there's a huge wall right against, and really, it's not. And in addition, that element is a canopy, and it's open. And further, this rendering doesn't have what ABR had requested, which are, hopefully coming up, my two palms that I put in front of that arch to try my, take a stab at rendering. So that is ultimately what the ABR wanted to see to help break up that massing. There was a question during our PC site visit of the height of the proposed portico chair on the southern side of the property adjacent to the Lexus dealership. It's proposed at 19 feet tall with a 14-foot clear. That 14-foot clear is required for parts, vehicles, and trucks to go through because less than that they would hit. And that is against the Lexus building, which is 20 feet 4 inches tall according to TI plans from 2009. This is the existing portico chair, and according to plans on file, it is 19 feet as well. So they are exactly the same height. So some benefits I wanted to underscore, and ABR appreciated this at two of our hearings. It's really substantially sited away from the residential areas, really run a focus, all that towards the front of the property. 55 feet from the right-of-way, 22 feet 4 inches to that column element, and then 80 to the proposed building, 90 feet from the rear property line to the back of the building. Again, enhancement of existing landscaping, interior service bays, paging system, no windows along the second-story elevation on the northern or eastern elevation to help protect residential privacy. We have a reduction in impervious hardscape, and therefore, a reduction in runoff and an improved stormwater, oh, pardon, and off-street inventory and delivery to avoid any potential traffic impacts. So just to summarize and underscore what Mr. Vermont had said, you know, this is a designated community priority project for, I'm sorry, designated community priority project. It's designed appropriately for the site, consistent with all plans and policies, and it's an improvement to the existing condition. It's been, unfortunately, just a parking lot with inventory. We're going to see improved drainage, improved landscaping, and an improvement all around, in my opinion. So we'd like to request project approval consistent with staff's recommendation. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. See, any comments back from staff, or could we go to comments from the public?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, we'll now go to comments from the public in this item. We have three speaker slips. You will have two minutes to talk on this subject. And we will also, you'll be able to see at the podium the two minutes that you have left as soon as I get it straightened out. The first speaker will be Joel Orr.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. It's difficult when housing is next to commercial spaces. That exists, I know. I found some nice words up here. I think compatible massing is probably an issue. It's huge. It's really tall. I also think the way it looks, although, well, backtrack, Architectural Board of Review was not unanimous. Their arguments were not about soft colors and taller trees. They agreed on those things. They were arguing more about this giant building, how tall it is, and where's the Spanish architecture? Where's the look? It's a very bright, more century-city-looking building. I also want to make sure we're all clear that this is also not just a sales place but a storage facility. In my community, I won't be storing my Honda CR-V there. Not that I'm sure there aren't people who can store their vehicles there. My second issue, I do appreciate that there have been modifications to lighting, et cetera. I know the Bicycle Master Plan went through. I still see the issue on the letter that I received. I would like to say that... I would like to say that if way down the line, you try to put a bike route through there, you somehow get the private property issues that I see on your map to go through to Loretto Plaza, that you do nothing with the berm. In fact, the applicant said at Architectural Board, "We don't need the bike easement." You know, they were willing to walk away from that. But I know the city council didn't. This is a cul-de-sac neighborhood. Ardea is a quiet, little, isolated corner there by that berm. There is no foot traffic. Nobody bikes to school because this is VA Valley Hope School District. We don't bike to school. We don't see bikes other than the neighbors riding theirs for exercise.
You have 10 seconds, Mr. Orr. You have 10 seconds left.
The only people we see are some people riding bikes to case our neighborhood. Our crime rate does seem to be up. It's mostly people pushing strollers and children riding bikes in Ardea in that corner. Please don't open that up if the only thing you can do to help.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, Michael DePonce.
Good afternoon, honorary planning commission members. My name is Mike DePonce. I live in the neighborhood that Joel was speaking about, the quaint, quiet neighborhood that our kids currently play in the streets. I came today to get educated on this project that I've been hearing so much about, and I appreciate the work on the applicant's part to kind of paint a clear picture. What I'm here about to speak about, or my concerns are, we went to the listening workshops, the outreach workshops for the Bicycle Master Plan back at Peabody School. We packed the auditorium with residents. We were concerned with that element, the 15-foot easement element of this project. As Joel said, our neighborhood on the lower part of Apple Grove is a parking lot for all of the car dealerships. I looked at the parking spots identified in this project. Out of the 99, before the screen was flipped, I counted 23 for employees. My guess would be that they have more than 23 employees on site. I don't want my neighborhood to become a parking spot if we put through that bike plan and open up the neighborhood. As much as I would appreciate the ability to go over to Hitchcock and to YMCA more easily for myself and my son, I have the same concerns about the safety for my son and the kids in the neighborhood. I understand that the Bicycle Master Plan, the goal is improved safety and circulations for bikes and cars. However, I see this 15-foot easement potential as an increased safety hazard and threat to our children as we have employees driving through our neighborhoods at high speeds. My only question to the applicant would be the light maintenance portion on the second floor. Is there pneumatic tools being used for that light maintenance? What kind of maintenance is being done on the second floor? Because that sound is going to carry right into our backyards.
You have 10 seconds.
That's the only question. If I, I don't know if the applicant can speak to the type of work, scope of work.
Not at this point, but we'll take your comments, and we'll come back and be asking questions at remainder of the hearing from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker is George Morelles.
Good day, all. Same concern.
Can you say your name, please, into the microphone?
George Morelles.
Thank you.
Same concern as the last two speakers. The easement for bike pedestrian use is unnecessary and unsafe. As Mike said, it's unsafe from a criminal standpoint. It opens us up from a quiet, rather cloistered environment to one open to anybody coming in and out. And also, as a veteran bicyclist myself, Hitchcock is a crazy place to send bikes into. It's fast, it's narrow, it's full of cars. And it has a turn, a winding turn that blocks bicycles on the road. I bicycle on the sidewalk. So I think this is ill-advised. The bicycle planning people just didn't take it into account well. It's poorly placed and undesired by everybody we have polled. I have petition from all the neighbors involved on that stretch of Ardea. Nobody wants that access. So that's essentially my argument. It's not needed, not wanted, and will be resisted. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's something that you do want to hand in to Ms. Galarte, we'd appreciate it. Thank you for your, thank you for speaking. Okay, that's the last comment that we have, public comment that we have. Back to Mr. Vermont. We're now going to get into questions from the commissioners. Is there some order you would like us to do that? Just anything that the commissioners have? Would you like us to go first through questions on a tentative subdivision map in some type of order? Or are you just ready to take whatever questions we have on the three items?
Mr. Chair, you can go in any order you'd like. I think that if you'd like to go in the order of the findings, that might be a way of organizing it, but I'm flexible. Thank you.
Okay, if that's okay with the commissioners. Okay, what I'd like to do is, if we can start down with Mr. Commissioner Higgins, and if you want to take your questions in the order of the tentative subdivision map development plan and then the PD development plan, if you have any.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I don't know if I can group my questions quite like that because they're operational.
Okay, well, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay, let me just.
Mr. Vermont will sort it out for us.
Shoot, here, maybe the applicant or staff can help me with some of these. So the question about the berm is a good one that the speaker brought up. Is that the reason that we have 40 feet on that end? Because the berm might someday be preserved? And I wonder about whether or not the berm has mitigating effects on sound and lighting. And so if the berm goes away, we've got some issues there with regard to the environmental work that was done, or at least the exhibits that would show that there might be more light or noise on adjacent properties. And then I really am, two more questions. One with regard to parking and the other with regard to loading. Parking, I just was curious. It looks like quite a bit of parking is organized around tandem valet. And I'm sort of, I'm interested in whether or not we need a condition of approval or at least more information on the plans as to where the employee parking exists, where it's serviced. I'm assuming that the, we're allowed to permit tandem parking in some circumstances, but I didn't see that sort of fleshed out in the staff report. So that's a question. Then with regard to loading, I had heard, I read that loading can't happen on the property and the loading for other commercial, I'm sorry, auto dealerships, just occurs in the right-of-way. And the applicant mentioned that loading would happen before operational hours. So could we get some more detail about when loading happens or doesn't happen? Or do we want, do the other dealerships in the area live with that kind of limitation on when they can load vehicles and unload vehicles? Answer those in any order you want.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. I'll try to do them in order. That mound that falls within 40-foot easement that was recorded against the property in the 1970s, that remains with the proposed subdivision, so that buffer easement would continue to exist. That mound wouldn't be altered as a part of this project. How the bike path, if that's constructed, would address the mound, I couldn't speak to. That's not been designed. But there is a possibility that would be affected in some way with grading associated with that project.
So the, we're making findings now based on this bicycle route. And the fact that the mound is still there and the noise and lighting is mitigated because of that mound. But we're also being asked to accommodate the bicycle.
I'm not under the impression that a bicycle path would require the removal of the mound. But I couldn't speculate to what that, when that project were to be designed, that would have to be a consideration as how you address those noise and stakes impacts.
I have, that's the answer I guess I'm looking for, so.
With respect to tandem parking, that is something that we're allowed to do. It's pretty common for service areas for automotive dealerships. The tandem parking on the second floor, as well as the tandem parking with the service on the lower level, would both be handled by employees on site. That wouldn't be the public parking in those spaces, of course. And one of the concerns the transportation staff had with this project was neighborhood issues regarding loading and unloading in the left-hand turn lane on Hitchcock. And so one of the things that we pursued with the applicant team was if they could accommodate loading off-street, that they incorporate that into their project. And that's what they've done.
But the applicant mentioned that the loading would occur before operational hours. Is that a condition of approval? Are we going to hold them to that? Is that realistic? Because, well, the first, I guess the first question is, you're going to load before 8:00 in the morning and unload, and that's probably not a quiet activity.
Dealerships typically receive stock prior to opening. That's because they have more flexibility on their site to move vehicles in and around before they are starting to take customers. We have not conditioned the project to require that to occur at any specific hour, though.
Mr. Pardon?
Mr. Higgins, would you like some explanation from the applicant?
Yes, if the applicant wants to clarify, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Higgins, and Mr. Vermont. I just wanted to underscore, the pedestrian bicycle easement is not part of this project. It's a separate project that will be vetted at the time that the city decides to pursue development, when it'll have its own environmental assessment regarding impacts to light, you know, biological, everything at that time. It's simply a dedication of land to the city that was requested by the city and processed separate from this project. The project before you today is the dealership, and it's a unique dealership compared to the others right now on Hitchcock. We have lower volume of cars delivered on site, lower volume of employees, lower volume of staff because of the high-end component of the dealership. It's not a Honda, it's not a Ford. They're not coming in the same frequency or volumes on site. So we're talking about a delivery of, and correct me if I'm wrong, applicant here, I'll have him come up, you know, maybe a half dozen of vehicles once a week, something like that. That could definitely be accommodated within a timeframe should the commission feel that there was one that would be more appropriate. And if I could just chip in, I would love to respond to some public comment if I'm able to at this time, otherwise at another time perhaps later on.
We'll wait for the questions from the commissioners, and then we'll give you adequate time to respond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple for staff and a couple for the applicant. So Andrew, if for some reason the easement materialized however we would want it, at least for a pedestrian path, very soon, is there a required public approval process for that, for the city to go through? Or can the city just do that when it's available?
Without the, no, Commissioner Jordan, there would be some public approval. At the very least, the allocation of funds is a public decision at city council. The award of a contract for design is at city council. The acceptance of new easement would also be at city council. And the Public Works Department would be, would have to conduct some public outreach.
That right now is potentially going to be a consent item at best at council. There's no actual project design consideration at the very least.
At the very least, it would have to go to ABR because of landscaping components. So there would be a public hearing for that item.
All right. So that's much better. And then the parking requirements that we put on dealerships in this particular area, could you quickly explain for me how that works, how the math works for employees?
Commissioner Jordan, yes. It's broken down by the different uses as defined in the IT manual, basically, that there's, you know, there's office component, there's warehousing component, there's the number of hoists for service. We require a certain number of parking spaces for each of those. It's, I think, three spaces per hoist, 5,000 square feet, or one parking space for every 5,000 square feet of warehousing.
So it's not just like one thing equals, there's a combination of things going to the body.
It's a formula that came up with the 99 required spaces.
And do we give any consideration to a particular applicant's stated use as being high-end, low-volume versus lower-end, higher-volume? Or is it just, it just applies whether it's a Jaguar dealer or a Ford dealer?
If an applicant wishes to do something other than the requirement, they would demonstrate why they do not meet the standard model, but that's not been done here.
Presumably, lower to lower. And these are, so these, this particular applicant is fully parked, just as a Ford dealer or Mercedes dealer would be?
Of the same size and uses, yes.
Okay. And then, do you have, you know, do you have, I put you on the spot because I know you're doing split duty between here and the airport, but, so if you wander down the street, is, would you have an opinion on whether that formula currently works with existing dealerships?
I don't know that the, I've looked at the approvals for the other auto dealerships in the area. They did meet their parking requirement. Whether or not the parking spaces are being used the way they were designed according to the formula, I could not speak to.
Would be fair to say anecdotally or from just a casual view on the ground, though, that there's a lot of parking taking place in the lower part of that street, right? A lot of street parking?
Yes, and that's been a concern from the public.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant, if I could. So the eight, I'm having trouble reading, I see spots for two sets of eight bike storage lot, bike storage areas. Are the eight secure interior ones, the ones at the rear of the building? Is that where they're at?
Yes.
Okay. And that, so that is a four-wall ceiling, secure door, leading to, I assume there are those two little cubicle kind of things, are the locker shower room, right?
No, those two cubicle things are actually detail base.
Okay.
But yes, that is where the arrow is right now. That is the, of four bike spaces, or rather allowing eight spaces.
Four stations or two bikes per, right?
Correct. And the other are outside underneath the northern canopy where the arrow is right now.
So those.
Yes.
And then, just to, you know, throw the question out there, and then you can, you don't need to answer it, but you can listen to what other people say about the answer. Or the question is, I'm interested to know if the project would be willing to condition that all employees park on site. So that seems to me to address one of the contentious reasons from the surroundings, while also believing when you say that all your employees are going to park on site. Right now, it's just you're meeting the letter of the law, and I would probably say that as you wander down the street, the letter of the law isn't sufficient. And so if you think you're truly going to be a high-end, low-volume, low number of employees, and you have adequate parking, that you'd consider being conditioned to put all your employees on site. So I'll leave that question with you, and I'll see what other people think about that. And you'll, I think you'll see whether or not people are going to gravitate towards that or not. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a problem with the subdivision. I don't have a problem with the use. But I do have a problem with the mass of this building. And I also want to indicate that the issue about the parking by employees on the street is one that concerns me as well. It's been a concern ever since that was developed as a car dealership place. Sometimes the dealerships have used parking that's supposed to be employee parking for their inventory. And that just is not acceptable. And it may, Mr. Vermont, do you have any idea of whether or not the city requirements are adequate? Do you have any idea whether they need to be changed?
The parking requirements for auto dealerships are likely adequate. It's a matter of using them appropriately. One of the conditions that we've applied on this project in the recommended conditions of approval is that the employee, the spaces that are designated for employee parking be physically marked for employees only to discourage their use as inventory or service vehicle storage.
Okay, well, that would probably help. Okay, and then the, one of the speakers from the public was concerned about noise that would be coming from the second floor. This is a question for the applicant. So I recall the upper floor is storage?
Correct. Yes, service is primarily. Yes, service is primarily on the first floor. I believe there are a couple hoists on the second floor, but they are towards the middle of the building, so the portion that's closest to the residential neighbors are for the storage, and all the service is on the outsides. Plus the second story, as I noted, there are no windows, so even talking on the second story shouldn't be able to filter into those residences to the north or the east. And if I may, if I may comment on the massing, I just wanted to highlight that the project, when it came in, was over six feet taller, and we listened to ABR feedback, and now it's almost 12 feet under the maximum height of the zone. And we were given the project compatibility criteria analysis with the condition to come back to further study the massing on the rear. So ABR made that point, and we will be going back to ABR to refine that even more. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, so it could come down, is what you're saying?
In height, probably not, but we can definitely look at the massing on the back and see what we can do to articulate that.
Yes, because looking, what's there right now is a very, very low one-story
Correct.
structure, and looking at it from the neighbors, the neighboring streets to the east, it's pretty imposing, and it's impressive that it's already come down a significant amount.
Yeah, yes, but I should, I'm sorry.
But it would be, it would be best if it could, if it could come down even further, is what I'm saying.
I have some great photos of story poles from Ardea and Gregory Way. Should the commission like to see what those might look like from the adjacent residential areas? Is that something that?
We did go over to the end of the street, and I think it's Ardea?
Yes.
That, but it's up to the
Perhaps for Chair Campanella?
Where we could see the, the story poles. And it was clear, it's a pretty, pretty impressive building, in terms of size.
Well, should the public or the commission like to see those photos? Yeah. Okay. Let me know when the appropriate time is.
Well, thank you.
Any other commissioners like, is it, you'd like to see?
I'd like to see that perspective.
Will the applicant show us their perspective? I presume it's just a couple of slides, so, is that correct?
Of the story poles? From, from the Ardea?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
Just bear with me for a second. Okay. So this is the view, where's my little clicker? From Ardea, and right as we turn into from Peach Grove, going closer, you can see the tip of the flag right there with that yellow arrow, and this is from the driveway of the closest residence, and that's the tip of the arrow right there. Again, that's the top of the building, and it's 90 feet back from the property line. So I have those three shots from Ardea.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lodge, any other questions?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson, please.
Okay, I've got two questions that I want to get clarified. One, in the staff report, page three, it talks about a 40-foot-wide long easement on the west perimeter, but looking at the site map, it shows it on the east perimeter, so if you want to clarify that, please.
Commissioner Thompson, you're correct, that's, that's an error, I should say, to the east.
Okay. I have a question for Mr. Vincent. We had a lot, we've had a lot of discussion so far about this easement and the potential for a future bike path. The easement has already been granted and recorded, is that not right?
That's correct.
So it's not up for discussion today, it's a done deal?
It's a done deal, whether it's up for discussion is up to others, but
Okay, thank you.
I think it's already been discussed.
Thank you.
And I, as the applicant said, it is not part of the project description or the subdivision that's proposed today.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the applicant just mentioned that the current height is 12 feet under the max allowed, is that correct? And I wanted to ask staff to confirm that?
Yes, the allowed
Your current design?
It's 33 feet 8 inches, and the allowed height is 45.
Okay, and is that reflected in the design that you've showed us on that particular slide?
Yes.
That's the current?
Correct.
And is that the design that most recently was approved by ABR?
Yes.
Okay, so no, no additional changes have been made?
That's correct.
Between that hearing and this hearing?
Yes.
On that, okay. I want to go back to loading, and I think this was, this was already asked by one of my fellow commissioners. I'm not clear yet in understanding, or the correlation between the hours of operation, so we have weekdays 8:30, starting at 8:30 a.m., to 8:00 p.m., Saturdays 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Sundays 10:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. And when off-hour or pre-loading hours, how will that be accommodated to ensure that the loading doesn't happen in the public right-of-way, as is happening with some of the other dealerships, probably most of the other dealerships? So who's, who's going to oversee it? If you don't open till 8:30 on weekdays, and then, you know, the other opening hours, how is this going to be supervised to ensure compliance with this understanding that, that we'll have?
And I'm going to have the applicant come up to correct me if I'm wrong in my answer, but I believe this is a guarantee. So these higher-end vehicles, being more sport-like, are very low to the ground.
Yes.
And to park a vehicle loading semi in the right-of-way, and then drive a higher-end vehicle, is the potential to do damage to the undercarriage and the front of the vehicle going in through and up a driveway. So it is in the inventories, the interest of the business in the inventory to protect it, to deliver it on-site, to avoid any possible damage to the vehicle as it enters the site, being very low into the ground to potential curb cuts that may do damage to the inventory. Operationally, I'm sure a manager would be on-site during that to confirm that no right-of-way parking and staging would happen, but I can have the manager come up and address further, and elaborate further, if desired.
That would be helpful, only because I want us to have in the record, and for all of us to understand what we're agreeing to, that even though it says your hour, your opening hours are these that are in our staff report conditions of approval, but yet at the same time, to me, there's this other conflicting language in our documentation, that the unloading will take place, I don't want the exact off-hours, prior to, so it's not correlating to me.
You're wanting to oversight.
If you're opening at 8:30, when are you actually going to unload? And maybe what you do is, you don't say that you open at 8:30, maybe it's much earlier than that, because it actually then would reflect the loading hours
Got it.
as well. I'd like to see it sort of like a full picture
Mm-hmm.
of when all activity on the property will take place, not just when your clients or customers are able to drive their cars on for service or what have you.
Pass it on to Mr. Mike Bell, please.
Hi, I'm Mike Bell, the applicant. Pretty simple, really. It is a, the high-end vehicles don't come in the same masses. Example would be some of the Mazarrades come only with one or two, sometimes come in a separate transporter, not a full-scale rig that you're looking at, same with the Alfa Romeos. We understand that the street, keeping the street clear is important, it's also important to us. So what we decided to do is, when vehicles get dropped off, we are working on another project, that is at the airport site, that you're probably aware of, and we had okayed to have the new vehicles that come in get dropped off at the airport if they're in a full rig, full-size, that would block the street. If they come on a trailer or one or two, and we do what's considered dealer trades, and that's something else you have to think about, you have a flatbed coming in, one or two trucks, it's really not cost-effective for us to have them drop somewhere and come back, and it doesn't create the same blocking that you would get by having a full rig. So our vehicles for inventory will be dropped off off-site, and then we will transport them to the location and drive them on. Parts department is another issue. Whether you know it or not, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, there's probably a rig pulling out there on the street that I don't even know if the neighbors would be aware of right now, and that's how we get our parts delivery. They usually come very early in the morning or left overnight. I would be suspect to know whether anybody in the room actually even knows that happens, right? And then, obviously, during operations, one of the reasons why we also want to make sure that the vehicle don't all drop at 8:31, 8:32, is a lot of the folks that are either in the room or outside in the community are going to come in for service, it just creates that same issue for ourselves. So we pick the very best times, and we don't want to, you know, we've done everything we possibly can going through in our mind that is fair and equitable, such as parking our employees on-site, being able to drop vehicles without interruption for the neighborhood, and also for our business. So it'll be the lowest impact time, and then when we made the decision to do it off-site, and drop vehicles somewhere else, and then our staff shuttle those vehicles in. You know, there's risk, there's transportation, there's having to hire extra staff to do that, but we're here to serve the community, and we're here to run a business, and we can work and make that work for everybody without blocking the street.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Bell. So to staff, could you help me then with the conditions of approval? I want to just revisit if there's a clear and complete description of what's being conducted during these hours of operation. Weekdays 8:30 to 8:00, Saturdays 9:00 to 7:00, Sunday 10:00 to 6:00, and this goes directly to my question and concern about loading and unloading. If we could take a quick look, please, at the conditions of approval, not the staff report, we have other information in the staff report, but the conditions of approval, maybe you could help us zero in, Mr. Vermont, on this issue.
Commissioner Schwartz, in the conditions of approval, we, we have a specific condition requiring the loading and unloading to occur off-street, so reasonably, that could be an enforcement item if there was a complaint about the loading and unloading occurring on-street. With respect to the hours of operations, the, the intent is, that's described in the applicant letter, is that those are the hours in which businesses conducted, that's the sales of vehicles and parts, the providing of service to maintain the vehicles. That does not include delivery times.
Right, so I would just tee this up for my colleagues to see if you would be interested in further clarifying, as Mr. Vermont just said, what the hours, what the hours listed here do and do not include, and whether or not you want to somehow reference other provisions for loading and unloading. Okay, let me go to my next question here. Regarding parking, and Mr. Vermont, you have a slide, it's slide 11, if you wouldn't mind putting that back up, and Mr. Jordan, I think was, Mr. Jordan was asking about parking as well. Looks like we have 23, proposed 23 parking spaces for employees, if I'm counting, let's see here. And then 16 bike parking spaces that are referenced, both in, I think, the staff report and, and conditions. So I'm wondering then, if we add the 23 to 16, if you could refresh my memory, if that covers, what percentage of employees does that, do those combined parking spaces cover? Now, so we're talking 39.
Commissioner Schwartz, the, according to the parking traffic formula, that the assumption is that there would be a peak of 23 employees on-site at any particular time. The bicycle parking would then be in addition to that, and that, the stuff, the secured parking would be for employees, but the unsecured could also be for customers, I suppose.
So speaking of, especially the bicycle parking spaces, I think of employees who are using that mode of transportation, I want to ask you about the shower locker facilities, if I could. Do we, do we have shower locker facilities at any of our other auto dealer facilities in Santa Barbara?
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay, can you, do you remember right offhand where they are?
Uh
Ron, Hitchcock, that, that one next to?
Commissioner Schwartz, the, the transportation demand management conditions in that area were originally crafted in the early 1990s, so many of the projects that have been constructed since then include that. But which ones, I can't recall off the top of my head.
Operational, I mean, not just on the plans, but there actually are shower facilities constructed and being used.
Physically constructed, whether, whether they're functional or used, I couldn't speak to, but they were physically constructed on the building plans.
I can see it as a very attractive amenity to employees. I'm just wondering, and we had a discussion this morning at our joint session with council about the drought, and about severe water shortages, and so I'm just curious about adding shower locker facilities in a, in an auto store facility? Is that really necessary? But if we have others, and if staff feels that we need to go in that direction, you know, I'm not going to push that in particular. I'm sorry, well, let me go back one more time to parking. I had a question about the staff report. On page one of the staff report, we have sort of these various aspects of parking, sort of the portfolio of parking, individually identified, bicycle, automobile, standard, valet, indoor, accessible, van pool, electric vehicle. I, I don't, I don't see that level of detail identified in your PowerPoint, slide 11, and I just am trying to understand how maybe you, you and/or the applicant came to this composition, and does it net out that we're just, they're, they're overparked, they have more than ample parking, given how they're going to try to encourage their employees to use these different modes? The max number of employees, which you said is 39, right, at anyone, is that at anyone? No?
Not, not according to the, the parking model, it should be 23.
I mean, sorry, 23. And is that on any one shift? Is that?
That would be the peak, yeah.
That'd be the peak, 23.
That's my understanding.
Okay, did you have any comments for me about all these different means of parking, kind of this, because we usually like to keep parking open to, to create flexible parking options on a particular private property. We encourage that. So this is, this is of curiosity to me, how we have such uniquely designated parking spaces and areas on this particular property.
Commissioner Schwartz, that was at the request of staff of the applicant, that they designate parking spaces to meet the individual requirements, and that was largely because of a concern to make sure that an adequate number of spaces dedicated for employee parking was available. We also have the requirement, you know, of course, for accessible parking spaces. So you, you bring up a good point, when I was, that table that I showed in the presentation was specifically about how we calculate the demand, not then how that is, is broken down by, by use.
When it translates to on-the-ground.
The number, right, the number that are electric vehicle ready, that's, that's done separately, and that's
I see.
But that is shown on the, on the site plan, and as articulated in the separate part.
Right. Okay, so this issue of, and some concern from some of the neighbors about the, the view shed and what they might be seeing from Ardilla, and the applicant put up a, a view of that. It appears as though the landscaping plan and the maintenance of that landscaping will be critical to sort of neighborhood compatibility and satisfying neighbor concerns. Just can, reconfirm for me, is that, is the landscaping plan going to be recorded with this as part of the conditions of approval for maintenance?
I
Separate from condition B dot nine, which you have on slide 35, will the actual plan be recorded, which we have, we do sometimes in the city?
Commissioner Schwartz, a recorded agreement requiring the applicant to comply with the landscape plan as approved by ABR is a recommended condition, so that would be recorded against the property.
Yes, the specific landscape plan.
The one that is approved by ABR, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think. Lastly, again, to neighborhood compatibility. Could we put up the slide, could you come back up here, the applicant team, and put up the slide of the, this would be the front view, the facade view, the streetscape view on Hitchcock of the, the front of the, the storefront there. And I've, I've watched the ABR tapes, I just have a question for you about, you know, it's hard to tell from, from this portrayal, so let me just, oh, you had it, you, you had it going back.
The corner one? The one that's
Just go back a few, yeah. You know, with your
My palms.
Artistically rendered palms, yes. The simula, yeah, just, if we could stop right there.
Takes a bit, it's a little delay.
That's okay, that, we're there, we're there.
All right, there they are. They like to make an appearance.
You know, I'm going to defer to ABR on the size, the bulk, and the scale overall. I can't tell from this artistic rendering how white, and if there's any glare or reflection off of the surfacing, the paint color, the materials, it, it certainly looks like it's more reflective and a lot shinier than the adjacent Lexus dealership structure, so could you help me with that? Oh, the architect, oh, thank you. Yes, the architect could maybe talk to that. And I know the neighbors have come
The rendering program, basically
The rendering program, basically, we're using it kind of to give it some glitz, some Hollywood feel to it towards shiny. The actual material is more of a natural aluminum color. Um, as far as reflectivity, it's much lower than that of glass. Um, again, it's a matte colored finish. I mean, if you notice the new paint jobs on a lot of the new cars, um, they have a matte finish as opposed to the traditional gloss finish. The finish is more like the matte finish on some of the new cars, where it looks almost like it's primer on the outside of a car. So it won't be very, very reflective as far as a building.
Um, I'll just close by, and I'll, again, be interested if my colleagues have any further comments on this. I'm, I'm, from this rendering, that's all I have to go by, you know, quite frankly. I, I'm a little concerned that it, it does look, um, out, a bit out of character. The reflectivity, the shininess, the glitz, as you put it, is a little more like Calabasas for me. And I, I don't, I drive down L.A. a number of times a month, and I, I'm just, I'm just questioning whether or not that really fits in with the compatibility issues and the findings we need to make. But ultimately, you know, I'll defer to majority opinion on that. Again, all I have to go on is this particular rendering today. Um, but this, this doesn't feel as both classy and subdued. That's where I'm going. I, I'd like to see a classy yet subdued look. Um, and I, I don't see that here, but again, maybe it's just, um, the software application that was used, and hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll get to that, or ABR will get to that.
We've tried to subdue the look. I've done a lot of, or I've done several BMW where we're in the inner-city, where we've made them very flashy. In this particular store, I was trained in Italy and also in California. Um, we tried to take the very Italian feeling of it and make it very, very simple, a bit subdued.
Okay.
Again, what's a little different about this store is you have big portcochers, and we're trying to bring the people in through the portcochers versus the front of the building, which is a new style of, of car, uh, uh, auto sales and presentation.
And I understand your clientele is different. I mean, I, I get that. I'm, uh, and yet it still needs, as you can appreciate, to fit into Santa Barbara as well.
Understand.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Commissioner Pujol.
Thank you. Okay, starting with the subdivision map portion of the project in front of us today. Um, I also had had a question on the exact status of the bicycle pedestrian easement, so I think that question has, has been answered. It's a done deal. Um, but I do want to talk about the other easements. And so I'm looking at the tentative map sheet page, sheet TM1, because that shows the easements and has the notations about the easements. Um, so my, my understanding about subdivision maps is that, first of all, this backup, this is a two-lot re-subdivision of one of the old parcels of an older track map. So the older track map had the forty-foot buffer along the north-south oriented, um, the eastern edge, um, for at least the two parcels that are being re-subdivided today. And then the map also had pre-existing the twenty-two-foot wide northern easement, um, along proposed Lot Two of this new two-way split. And so, and those are notated on the map and shown, and I appreciate that. Um, but what I think, one item that's missing that I would like to, uh, propose later in our deliberations is I believe it also is necessary and prudent of us, um, to include reference to those easements in the conditions of approval. Under, um, page B1, conditions of approval, there's a description of approved development, and I could give you some wording later. But I think in there, we should be clear that the subdivision reiterates retention of those easements. And, and I think they were key when they were originally proposed in terms of a buffer from the residential neighborhood, and I think they're key now. So I think they are worthy of mention in the conditions of approval.
Commissioner Pujol, would you like to get a response on that? Is, is, your comment, Mr. Vermont?
Chair Campenella, uh, the, uh, the condition would apply to, uh, this condition would apply to the tentative subdivision map, which would be to say that the tentative subdivision map will include the, um, recorded, uh, easements as shown on the tentative subdivision map. Um, I, we, it should not be applied to the development plan because that's specific to this development, and if were that to change, those conditions wouldn't carry forward.
Correct, yeah, I agree, and I, I completely agree with that. Under proved development, I think you have two parts. One is, um, a discussion, one is a sentence about the map, and then item two is more towards the development plan or something like that. So I'd say put it in the earlier part, so it stays on the map. I completely, um, concur with, with that.
Chair?
Excuse me, I, I'm, Mr. Vermont, could you, uh, one, let the planning commission know as well as myself, the existing buffer easement that was part of the prior subdivision along the eastern property line, was that easement dedicated to a public entity? How, who holds that easement?
Chair Campenella, and Mr. Vincent, the, um, uh, that easement was dedicated in nineteen sixty-six to the county of Santa Barbara. That became the property of, or the development right of that easement became the property of the city of Santa Barbara at annexation.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, then, in that case, the city, the city holds that easement right now. Any development of this property inconsistent with that easement right that was obtained by the, the city as the successor to the county would be inconsistent with our easement right. So it's, it, to reiterate, it's, the city already has it, we don't need to do it again. It's being noted on this map because eas, existing easements must be noted, otherwise they are extinguished by the recording of a new map. It's noted on this map, it will continue, and the city is already holding that easement right as the successor to the county.
Okay, let me follow up. That's helpful, thank you. So, so let me follow up on that. So, the, you're saying that because it's an existing easement already basically owned by the city, um, and because, what, subdivision law requires that all existing easements be shown on the maps, that the listing on the sheet, on the page sheet itself, without doing a separate condition, is, um, a guarantee that that won't ever expire?
Yes.
More or less, ever, unless the city decides to...
More, more than less.
More than less, okay. All right, then, that's good. That's, that's, um, kind of the guarantee I was looking for. Okay, perfect. Um, then, secondly, and I think this moves from, that was my only subdivision item. Um, so moving to the development plan, um, now we have, I think, our, uh, new condition nine that staff distributed to us in the revised conditions today regarding the maintenance of the landscape in those buffers. Is that correct?
B nine.
Yes, item B nine. Um, and I appreciate that addition. Um, and I also think it's, you know, probably in the right place being in the development plan section, not the map section. Um, but based on earlier comments, particularly, I think, by Commissioner Higgins, I, the, the berm was an important screening feature in the original approvals, and I, it's still also now an important screening feature. So in addition to the landscaping, I think, for me, it would be a better, um, uh, idea if we added the berm language in that draft condition as well. So in addition to maintaining the landscape, and they also need to maintain, um, the berm. And I noticed, I think there's a little bit of a, maybe some erosion, or maybe the berm might not have been, it might have been a little bit of areas where maybe you would actually need to, um, keep it at its, at least current screening, um, level. So it doesn't get cut down or leveled, that sort of thing, because I think that's important. So that's, that's a comment that I have. Um, then, moving on, I have a question on lighting. So, here's really great page in here of the photometrics, which I understand what it's supposed to do and why it's there, but I certainly cannot tell you how to read it, and I don't think I need to. But my question comes to this. So you have this kind of photometrics that I think shows where the light shed is or isn't, and what the light shed does on the property. But actually, what I'm interested in first is a question is, does the height of the light standard affect those photometrics? And if you have a taller light, is it shed more? If you have a shorter light, does it shed less?
Commissioner Pujol, very generally, yes. Um, the, the LED can be directed either with shading or the structure of the, the headlamp, um, to be narrow or wide. Um, but yes, generally speaking, the exact same fixture higher up would cast a wider shadow.
So our sheet that we have in our package that shows the photometrics, what height light standard is that based on? Would you like to see it? I would, and I know, I think you had a rendering before or something.
They're actually twenty feet tall, and our architect can speak more to it, but let me pull up, oh, right back there. There you go, there's a spec sheet.
With the new LED lights, you don't want to go above twenty feet, or the element that you're lighting, which is the car, you start to diminish the brightness of the car. So you're defeating it by taking it up higher. Um, ten years ago, when we used HID bulbs, we used to set the, the poles at thirty feet. That way you would have fewer, fewer light poles, it would be cheaper to light the site. But with the LED light, we can't do that anymore. So we've had to automate, because of the design of the bulb, we've had to drop them back down to twenty feet. And it's also much more easy to control the light. Um, with the LED, each light is like the end of a, of a pen. So you can basically glue those on and tilt them to basically design your light, your light canopy that you want below it.
That's kind of a, I think we have a little bit of a different perspective, because me, twenty feet sounds tall already. But I guess what I want to know is, the photometric sheet that you included, and that is based on a twenty-foot-tall light standard already?
Correct.
Okay, so, so if, um, ABR approves that, or whatever version of it they approve, that would, that would actually fix the light, and, and it would be based on no light shed off the parcel lines?
Correct. The, the, the real distance is fourteen feet. But when we look at the photometrics, we're looking at the top of the cars. So we're already five feet in the air when we're looking at the light on it. Does that help you a little bit?
That's interesting. Yeah. Yeah, well, I just wanted clarification that...
Because we're not looking at the ground, we're looking up in the air at the hood of the car.
Yeah, that they're, that they match, and so when ABR looks at the lighting guidelines and whatnot, um, it, it, it's really dependent also on the height of the light and not the shed, you know, the, the bulb or the fixture itself. Okay. Okay, that's helpful, thank you. That answers my question. Um, and then, lastly, I just wanted to say, actually, um, uh, thank you to the applicant team, because some, often we show what a project is going to be, but sometimes we don't actually talk about what it doesn't include. And the fact that you even, um, brought up in your presentation that there will, will not be any outdoor amplified sound, I appreciated very much. Um, I would like to see that recognized in the conditions of approval, though, because I think that's, that would be, um, I mean, you know, when you're budding, as we've learned with other projects, when you're budding residential neighborhoods, that can be an issue. Okay. All right, I think that is all for me.
Thank you. A couple of questions, back on the, let's see, subdivision map, Mr. Vermont. Uh, we're, we're not going through all the conditions under the municipal code to make the findings on the subdivision map relative to utility connections, et cetera. But, uh, what I'm interested in is, as we now see it, and as that map is shown and being signed off on, uh, staff feels that all of the conditions to satisfy the subdivision map act are in place. For us, we don't have to make any calls, decisions, or modifications. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, and then you're also satisfied with the environmental review. The biggest one, of course, is traffic, but you've determined that this fits the IT model of traffic for a car dealership, uh, in the area of this size and square footage.
Specifically, a, uh, an auto dealership at this exact location as modeled in the city's transportation, traffic model.
Okay. Um, and I think, uh, that's probably all the questions I have. Uh, we would then go to comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, could we go back to condition B nine, the one you want to add? I, I wasn't clear from the questions Commissioner Pujol was asking. It seems to me, the way it's worded, it would, um, not require the property owner on proposed Lot Two to maintain the parts of the berm, of the, the easement that are not part, you know, whatever is left beyond the fifteen feet.
Well, for both, it's, it's the forty-foot on the eastern side that's shown on the tentative subdivision map, and then it would be the twenty-two-foot easement along the north side of par, proposed Lot Two. Um, those are the, those are the easement areas.
The way it says, maintained until the time that the city develops a pedestrian bicycle plan, path.
Yes, that's because the, the, um, the bicycle and pedestrian easement that the city has obligates the city to maintain the bicycle path once it's constructed. So that would become a...
Which is fifteen feet, right?
It's a minimum of ten feet. Um, but the exact width and the amount of landscaping and, uh, you know, grading that would have to be on-site, it could be a bit wider than that.
Okay, but the way I read that, it seems that, and Mr. Vincent, you look as if you've been thinking about this maybe, it seems to suggest that once the path is put in, whatever it's width, the city's responsible for the, all the rest as well.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Vermont, I have a question again. Um, the scope of the landscape plan for site, uh, Lot One and the scope of the landscape plan for site, Lot Two, they're both going to cover the, this easement area that is being discussed as far as what landscaping will be maintained?
Chair Campenella and, uh, Mr. Vincent, the, um, the forty-foot ease, landscaped easement as described was recorded, is the previously recorded easement, um, not per se the bicycle pedestrian easement. And we could make that more clear if that helps.
No, my, my question wasn't about the bicycle easement. It, my question is, what is the scope of the landscape plan that is part of this application, so that we don't have, rather than referencing these easements, reference the landscape plan if that's adequate, and that condition the owners of the two parcels to maintain the landscape plan, or maintain the landscaping on their parcel per the approved landscape plan? Does that encompass the issue at hand, or?
That would for Lot Two. We could reference the prior approved landscape plan for, um, Lot One, I, as an alternative to this, yes.
You tell me if that works for the purpose of this proposed condition.
It would, it would do the same thing as, as, as what we've drafted currently, yes.
Mr. Chair, my, my only suggestion here is if we can, that will simplify and take out these issues of which easement are we talking about and so forth. You reference the landscape plan approved by the ABR for the particular lot in question, that you go back to that. If the landscaping isn't being maintained, you go back to that same landscape plan, and you say, put it back the way it was approved. So that's, that's the purpose of my questions, and my suggestion is to... So that's, that's the purpose of my questions, and my suggestion is to reference the landscape plans that are approved by the ABR, as opposed to having to worry about, where's the scope of the easement? The landscape plan also will provide you the detail as to what the landscape is supposed to look like. The easement documents probably don't speak to that at all.
Mr. Chair, just one clarification. The ABR has not approved a landscape plan for Proposed Lot 1. That's an old landscape plan that was under the county before. So I do think it's appropriate to have a condition that references that 40-foot easement for Proposed Lot 1, that they maintain the berm and the landscaping.
So, Mr. Vincent, where's that leave us?
Well, do you have a copy of the, of the approved landscape plan from the county? Can you get one? I mean, the point is, is that, I don't know, right now, referencing the easement area, that doesn't tell me what you're expecting as far as the maintenance. It tells me where, where something needs to be maintained, but it doesn't tell me the standard to which it needs to be maintained.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, could I ask a follow-up question?
One second.
I yield.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, is it, speaking to Mr. Vincent, a follow-up question here. Is it, I hear what you're saying, so is it feasible that you could require a landscape plan prior to recrodation of the subdivision for both lots 1 and 2? And it could either be the same one, or another one, or reflect what's existing?
You could.
Though perhaps that would be an approach, is just to make sure we require it for those two lots, and, and maybe in there, and also include the berm, that's not mentioned now.
Mr. Chair, I had a question about the berm. To, what, I mean, I could see having a condition that prohibits the owners of these parcels from taking any actions that would reduce the size of the berm. But as far as, I don't, I don't know what, you know, is that what you're looking for? Or are you wanting to somehow bring the berm back to whatever condition it was in at some other prior time?
I'm not a landscape architect, or, but, but I think the prob, with, with the berm, we don't want it to be cut down lower in height, and we want it to be, for lack of a better word, healthy. It has to be in a self-sustaining shape, and I think some of it is starting to erode a little, look like slough off a little bit, and I think eventually, it would slough away if you didn't do some maintenance. This is an artificial berm, it's not a natural berm. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Lodge?
Or, perhaps a simpler solution is to put a period after "maintained" in the second one, simply requiring the owners of each lot to maintain the easements, period. The landscaped, shall keep the landscaped easement area along the eastern and northern property boundaries maintained, which is, I think would accomplish what we're looking for. And the issue of what happens when and if the bicycle path is put through would be dealt with at that time.
Mr. Chair?
One sec. Mr. Vincent, in response to that, are you-
I'm just trying to figure out where the commission wants to go. Because, speaking to Commissioner Lodge's suggestion, it's likely that the property owner who's maintaining the Lexus parcel already, or the parcel right now, and the leasehold of the Lexus dealership, they may say they're already maintaining it. And yet, we're hearing from members of the public and members of the planning commission that they want something different to happen. If you want something different to happen, you need to tell us what that is. We'll put it into a condition, and then that will get recorded against the parcels. If, if you want to have, I've heard today that part of the application for the development plan for Lot 2, is that the northern lot? Lot 2 includes an ABR-approved landscape plan. For Lot 2, we'll add a condition of approval that says, "The owner of Lot 2 shall maintain the landscaping on Lot 2 as approved by the ABR." Okay, so that settles, settles Lot 2. We hear that, that Lot 1 doesn't have a current ABR-approved landscape plan. There may be a historic landscape plan, but if you want to have a new ABR landscape plan for Lot 1, that could be a requirement of this project. And then, the lot, the owner of Lot 1 would be obligated to maintain the landscaping on Lot 1 per the ABR landscape plan.
Okay, and then, again, the easement in the future only applies to Lot 2. There's no easement over Lot 1. It's just strictly the condition for the subdivision map, for the, for the tentative map. A condition that we're going to see maintenance on both lots of the landscaped area, and on Lot 2, it would be until such time we decided to build a bike path, or whatever the city wanted to do.
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess, let me, it might be time for a straw poll here on the commissioners, if I can, on which commissioners feel that a condition should be added, that Lot 1 would also have to submit a landscape plan to ABR and agree to maintain it as part of the approval of the map between, in the tentative map of both Lots 1 and 2. Does anyone wish to agree with that point and make it a condition?
Could you repeat that again?
Okay, I see no hands raised on that? Oh, okay, I asked if anyone, okay, straw vote. Show of hands if I can. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to also, I think, had, in the direction of where Commissioner Lodge was heading, which was, first of all, I do, I would support the condition. I think it's a good point. I think that, even though the, the bicycle pathway isn't a part of the project, we're talking about it. If the berm goes away, it's hard to make the findings that, we would, we would otherwise be introducing a conflict later, that perhaps the city would agree to address in terms of a sound buffer or mitigation in, in the form of a block wall, or some additional fencing, or the berm that stays there, so that we don't put this particular applicant out of compliance with some of the environmental findings that we're making for lighting and noise. So I think the condition, I hate to add conditions to projects, but I do think that if we could add something that in, in the event that the bicycle plan is financed or otherwise applied for, that either the city or the applicant, or the, the property owner, has to mitigate for noise. And/or otherwise recreate the mitigation that exists now with regard to lighting and noise that is accomplished now with the berm.
Okay. If I can, Commissioner Higgins, that's somewhat different of what we had on the table.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. We can do a straw vote on that, too. We, we got a couple of straws here that we can-
I'll support, I'll, I'll stop now with the raised hand in support of the first.
Can I, can I have a show of hands, first of all, on the straw vote to condition Lot 1, in addition to Lot 2, to maintain landscaping according to the landscaping plan ultimately approved by the ABR? Show of hands? Okay, so that's the straw vote, and when it comes time to give our approval, then it would be worthwhile if the maker of the motion would include that, since we do have a consensus here at the planning commission. And then, would you like your, your comment as well, to see if there's support for it? Can you repeat it, please, once more?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my, my suggestion is that there is a condition that's included in the, in the project approval, that in, at the time that the bike path goes through the property, that either the applicant or the easement holder mitigates for sound to the standards that exist in this development application.
You're saying the applicant or the city?
The easement holder or the owner of the property. Somebody's got to do it, and I don't-
Pardon, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Higgins, with, being that the conditions of approval with the development plan will stay with the land, wouldn't that potential future have to adhere to that anyway? So would that be a redundant condition that we're considering? Like, wouldn't they have to adhere to the conditions that we are being able to potentially protect?
That's not what I heard from staff. The staff said, "We'll deal with that later when we apply for the permit and go to the BAR." And, and so it sounds to me like that design by the applicant, the city is the easement holder for that bicycle path design, would then, it could then include some mitigation for noise, but-
Okay.
Commissioner Jordan?
Well, I didn't like the last one, and I like this one less. The project already has a mitigation on site, and they're giving up, as part of, as part of this process, they're, they're agreeing to work around the easement that's already there, and the entity that would take over that easement and put in something in the future that would not, potentially, I guess, lead to lessening of the protection from the business, but certainly increase noise and use, just based on the easement and the owner of the easement's desire, that should be borne by the city. It should be borne by the easement holder, not by the, by the property owner 20 years from now.
Okay. Mr. Higgins, would you still like a straw poll on your request, suggestion? You can say yes.
Sure, we can do that. I just, I just, I don't, I think that if we don't include something in the conditions of approval now, whenever this happens with the city, it's, it's gonna, there's gonna be a conflict. So, go ahead and take a straw, a straw poll.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner, we have Schwartz?
I guess I'm not understanding why there's confusion. So, let's look at the language currently, page 2 of 12, in our conditions of approval. We're talking about Lot 2, correct? Okay. Very first sentence, "Owner shall comply with the landscape plan approved by the Architectural Board of Review for Proposed Lot 2." If, in fact, that final landscape plan is sufficient in the areas we're now talking about, to maintain, to mitigate, to improve, no, Mr. Higgins, you're shaking your head? I mean, if that landscape plan, with staff's review, city attorney's office review, applicant's agreement, is sufficient in these ways, why, why are we feeling like we need to expand or revise this language, as long as the landscape plan that gets approved and will be recorded will address these issues?
I think, Commissioner Schwartz, it's, that's decided.
Therein lies the rub, is that-
No, the rub is with regard to the city's implementation of the bike path later in the future.
Okay, so, so it's, it's, it's that sort of follow-on reference, that the city then has an obligation to, and then fill in the dot, you know, dot, dot, dot?
Either party, in my opinion, would work.
Mr. Chair?
Because B9 doesn't spell that out, and I think, okay, now, so now I understand why you're concerned and pushing it.
Mr. Chair? May I, may I suggest a, a condition to address this issue, for the commission to consider? If the, this would be number 10, recorded condition number 10. If the bicycle slash pedestrian path is constructed, "The design of the path shall incorporate elements that either mimic or replicate the sound slash light attenuating effects of the berm."
Okay, is, is that okay with-
No, I have a question.
Go ahead. Commissioner Thompson?
I have a question for Mr. Vincent. How can you condition the property owner for something that the city may do in the future? You're suggesting a condition of approval for a property development that they have no control over. So how can we condition the property owner for something that the city may do in the future?
It, you're right, that the, it is, the, the city is the easement holder. It, the, the recorded conditions against this property are a convenient way of recording that and giving notice to anyone. This property, the easement, is subordinate to the property rights of the property owner. The city would have to, essentially, whoever proposes the pedestrian path slash bicycle path would need to comply with that condition as well. As to who pays for those additional elements, I'm going to leave that, you know, they can argue with each other over that. I think Commissioner Jordan did have some good points. But I believe, you know, my, my suggestion here is, is merely that this recorded condition is a convenient place to put that reminder going forward. I don't know when this bike path will get built, but this, you know, I was attempting to address both Commissioner Higgins' point, and also using the, the opportunity of this recorded condition as a placeholder, and as what recorded conditions are, constructive notice going forward, that when that path is designed, this commission has told this property owner and anyone who is using that property, that easement, to build that path in the future, it needs to attenuate the sound and, and light, as has the berm.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. I have, I have, I, I, to me, that condition sounded good, that you just read, Mr. Vincent. I would, I would like one addition to it, though. It's lighting and noise, but also, I think, is equally as important as those, is visual screening, because the berm does provide visual screening.
I'm a little confused, before we go back, if I may, okay? We have an easement agreement that's recorded, superior to these conditions of approval. Nothing in that agreement talks, all it says is maintenance, "shall maintain." It's not specific on sound walls, lights, or anything else. So if this condition goes in here, in order to be effective, the city's going to have to subordinate its current position to what's contained in this, these conditions of approval, or make some modification to the easement agreement. Is that correct?
Yeah, Commissioner Campanella, I'm not sure if the, the subordination rules, like financing, apply in the same way as conditions of approval here, but that is, that is a point. I can't tell you one way or the other. I think the, another approach to this would be to remove that from the conditions of approval that are recorded against the property, and to simply direct staff in some other method to advise public works that their design for the pedestrian path needs to mimic these improvements, the, the effects of the berm. That's, that's another approach to, I mean, where Commissioner Higgins is coming from, is that the design of this parcel and the, in the development plan that you are considering today is dependent upon the effectiveness of the current design of the property. Beyond that, the city could come in later. And Mr. Higgins is saying, I'm okay with, well, I won't put that, these, that word in your mouth, that Commissioner Higgins would consider this approval needs to address the fact that the city could come in later, and his point is, if the city's going to come in later, it shouldn't undermine the effectiveness of the current design of this parcel with these respects. So that's, I mean, how you, how you want to bring that in, if you, I get it, that the recording of it against the parcel, that's a, a little awkward. It was an attempt to find a way to have that condition of approval have some legs, because I, I'm a little suspect that it's simply a planning commission resolution going forward, however many years it'll take for that path to come to fruition. I was trying to find a, a way of having some notice, but I, I admit that the, the various subordinations or priority of those conditions versus the city's easement, I couldn't tell you definitively how that would play out.
Okay, well, let me just give an opinion a little bit on it, what we're talking about. I don't, I don't agree with the fact it's an either-or, and it's left up in the air, who puts the wall in? Let's take, let's take the tack that it, the city comes, that the applicant complies with maintaining the landscaping, keeping up the screening, both on Lot 2 and Lot 1. The city now comes in and wants to put in a bike path, okay? That's going to be a separate project. And if the neighbors feel that the city putting in the bike, bike path, they're going to create light, noise, et cetera, they're going to come out and protest that the city do something else. So we can easily say, since it's going to be a separate project, subject to public opinion, a public, public comments, and public wants and needs to the, and can be appealed to the city council or appealed to us, that might be enough. Or, if you do include it the way you can, if the neighbors come out later and complain to the owner of the property, "Hey, how come you did this?" He can say, "I didn't do it. The city's now responsible. Look, I have an agreement. Don't bother me," you know, "It's not mine, it's their easement." So talk to the city. Whether that accomplishes anything, I don't know. But I tend to lean for the fact that when this project, whatever has to get done to implement a bike path that's safe, or, you know, does a wall go up or not go up? We don't know. The city's going to have to look at all of the conditions at the time, appease the neighbors, appease the bike, you know, safety on a bike path, and I think at this point, we should stay out of it. So, that would be my opinion, and if the rest of the commissioners agree with that- And if the rest of the commissioners agree with that, I would suggest that we table that one. And I think we had a 5-2 straw vote in favor of the condition to, as far as Lot 1 and Lot 2, both having approved landscape plans, which we can bring up in a motion, okay? Unless anyone would like to continue to pursue the recordation of this obligation on the part of the city within the conditions of approval itself, I think we should move on, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to move on, too. I think I can, I can support the project. I think it's a great project. Thank you for bearing with us, or me, during this particular item. And so, I think it's a well-designed project. I can get behind some of the comments on the commission with regard to the architecture. I think it is a little bit out of place, but I don't want to tread on the ABR's role in this process, and I think they'll do a good job with that. I would like to, I would support the project if it had a condition as read by Mr. Vincent that obligated the city, and not to confuse things by adding, or the owner. I think the language that you proposed is good, that obligates the city to mitigate for noise, that would otherwise be lost if the berm is gone. And with that, I would support the project.
Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Higgins, I'm having difficulty visualizing what would be comparable in mitigating the impacts of noise and light if there's a cut through the berm. Is there some way that it can, if there's a cut through, otherwise, the bike pedestrian path's gonna have to come up a ramp on one side, and come over the top, and come ramp down the other side? I mean, as far, I don't know of anything as effective as the berm for those purposes. And so...
In any kind of a fence or a block wall?
There needs to be a place, I suppose it could be...
There would be one little eight-foot section, perhaps, where the bikes are coming through, but the rest of it, and I wouldn't want to specify that now, but just, or other means by which sound, noise, visual impacts are mitigated, with the potential loss of the berm.
Okay, why don't we, if there's, why don't we finish up with comments, and then we'll entertain the motion and what's going to be included between Mr. Higgins' suggestion, as well as Lot 1 and Lot 2, ABR and landscaping. So we're still taking comments, Mr. Jordan?
Sure. So, a little frustrated about the usual loading up on this with the other conditions and rewriting conditions, but if it doesn't get too bad, I'll support the project. I think it's an appropriate use for the site. I don't see anything that glaringly jumps out at me in the three visits to ABR in terms of compatibility, or size, mass, or scale. I think, I think they've done their job, and there's nothing there that I'm going to do better than they did. I'm very appreciative of the fact that we think you're going to park all your employees on site. We'll see if anybody wants to play with that, and then there are further comments, but I, you know, to a layman, as you go south, there's certainly a problem with these uses in those existing places. And I get your high-end, low-volume argument, but you could go out of business in a year and sell it to a satellite or the Honda dealer in Galita, and it becomes a, whatever that is, a low-end, high-volume dealer, and you're back to just mimicking the parking issues that occur further down the street from you. So, not a lot of control there, part of it's trust. In particular, with this project, I think everything you're doing, because it's new, is gonna be improvement on what was there before. So the people that have lived in that neighborhood and lived through, if that was Mel Clayton Ford, bad lighting, more noise, outdoor bays, all that's going away. I think there's some huge pluses there. The noise management with pagers, the stormwater management plan, that's gonna, you know, you're taking an asphalt lot, and you're making those improvements there. The little details, like no second-floor windows on your east and north side, the oriented lighting that's placed in a manner that accomplishes what you want to do, but also benefits the surrounding neighborhood, and the orientation of the building itself, to you push it down as close as you can to the other similarly exactly approved land uses of this zone, and get it away from your neighbors that are residential on the north and east side. So, I won't, I won't have any problem supporting the project and making the findings in the staff report. Again, I'm a little frustrated that we're gonna tack on to this. I think it's an improvement to what's on the ground, it's an improvement to what's there, that was before. It fits exactly into the land use of the, of this particular zone. On paper, right now, they'll be parked what they should be, where I think if you were able to somehow go into the other operations, they're certainly not. So I see some, I see some good things to come out of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Not showing up? Oh, they're not working. Oh, gosh, that's what's going on.
Commissioner Pujio, comments?
Yeah, okay, so, just first, to some of the conversation we've been having, it's been focusing on, on the conditions. I support a change to the revised condition B9 that would, I think Mr. Vincent suggested before, we could add a requirement for a landscape plan for Lot 1 in there. And I think that's important, because this is a subdivision, and it's not a development plan on Lot 1, the development plan's only on Lot 2. So, the assurance we need for maintenance of that landscaping really comes up under the actual creation of the lot, I think, for Lot 1. So I would support that addition. And also, I would like to see the inclusion of the berming being in the maintained language under that condition, too, because I'm not so clear, and maybe it's my ignorance, but I'm not so clear that a berm and landscaping are one and the same thing. I think you landscape a berm, but I don't know if the berm itself, especially a berm of that size, would be considered a landscape feature or not. It's really a screening feature, so I would recommend that. And then, there's, we mentioned earlier, and the applicant had agreed, willingness to recognize that there'll be no specific outdoor amplification. And there's a condition on page 6, condition 3, it's E3, I guess, on page 6 of the draft conditions. It already has a discussion of a paging system. So the thing that would make this more clear in this regard of that previous discussion we had, was that the evidence of the employee paging system on proposed Lot 2 that excludes outdoor amplified sounds, that would make it more clear, rather than avoids or looks to, so I would appreciate that. And with that, I support the project, I support the subdivision, lot split, and also the development plan. I can make the development plan findings, and particularly for the set of findings that has to do with the auto dealerships specifically, just would like to just remind us all that this area has long been designated as an area for auto dealerships, and going back to the days when we were moving the auto dealerships from Lower State Street out to this area. So, it's been part, and it's an existing, it's a redevelopment of the lot, not a new development of the lot. And so I would support the project for those reasons.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting the project proposal, and I have a few specific comments, though. First, I asked staff and the applicant about, not only hours of operation, but in total, what will be taking place on the property during the hours that are specifically mentioned on page 11 of the staff report under the development plan. Currently, it's not defined, or the activities are not defined. So, I would like, this is D2 on page 11 of the staff report, I would ask my colleagues to consider supporting incorporation into the conditions of approval, and ask staff if you think this is reasonable. The hours and some broad definition, you know, what that includes, or if it excludes something, but specifically this issue of loading and loading, which is a sensitive issue for the neighborhood, and where we're trying to reduce congestion on Hitchcock, I think that's important to clarify. Additionally, let me go to something. So when we get back, so when we go back to this item B9, and then a new one, B10, that Mr. Vincent wordsmithed for us, on B9, there's no definition, there's no reference, because we don't have a landscape plan, as I understand it, for Lot 1. I think Mr. Berman was asked, does the county have one? We don't know if there's a landscape, right, currently for Lot 1? Right, Mr. Berman, that's what you said?
Chair Campanella, Commissioner Schwartz, I'm not familiar with it.
Not aware of one.
We have civil drawings that show where the trees are, for example, so we're not blind, but it's, but we do not have...
So the reason I'm referencing that is this, again, this first sentence, "The owner of proposed Lot 1 shall keep the landscaped easement area along the eastern property boundary maintained." What does that mean? I mean, we're being so specific with Lot 2, and asking that an approved landscape plan be recorded into the conditions of approval, and yet, we're so vague with Lot 1, and I don't know...
Mr. Chair.
If we can do anything about that, Mr. Vincent?
I believe the discussion morphed from that description. What I understand the commission's current position to be, is that the subdivision, one of the conditions of the subdivision, would be that a landscape plan be approved for both Lot 1 and Lot 2, that there would be a condition of approval recorded against both Lot 1 and Lot 2, that they maintain those landscaped areas per the approved landscape plan, and that, what was the last?
Two different landscape plans, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, there'll be two different lots, potentially owned by two different people.
Okay.
So each owner of the property.
No, Ms. Galarte?
Well, no, I believe we can address that by just amending condition B4.
B4, yes.
To just say, for proposed lots 1 and 2.
Okay.
Yes.
And this is feasible for Lot 1? I mean, there's a path, there's a review and approval path for this for Lot 1? Yes? Okay.
Yes.
Since...
The project has to go to the ABR. The project is the, a subdivision. Lot 1 is part of the subdivision. You are conditioning the design and improvement of a subdivision.
If I may, the, sir, there's not confusion under the proposed condition B9?
Mr. Chair, forget about B9. I'm sorry, this was all of, what we're talking about here is, is an alternative to B9, because B9 was, was...
It's benign.
Was, well, B...
It's gonna be reworked, that's what you're...
B9 is gonna go away.
Reworked.
B, condition B9 is, will go away, because it was, it was hung up on describing everything by the easements. Condition B4 will have, will be rewritten, so that it deals with a landscape plan for both Lot 1 and Lot 2. Both properties will be responsible for maintaining the landscape plans that are applicable to their lot.
Okay, now, there is an easement area between the two lots. And I believe that B9, which is not with us anymore, when it talked about the easement area along the eastern property line, that's Lot 1, right? Is that referring to the area between, where the two lots would be subdivided?
The easement area along the eastern property line currently runs the whole length of the eastern property line. When the subdivision occurs, that easement will be bisected by Lot 1 and Lot 2. There'll be a new property line between them. Lot 1 will maintain, the scope of the landscape plan that I'm conceiving here, well, I'm just trying to give effect to your discussion, sorry, the landscape plan for both properties is intended to cover that, the buffer easements on the eastern property line of both, all right? That landscape plan will give effect, will tell the property owners what they're expected to maintain. They'll be conditioned by the subdivision to maintain that, those areas, per their approved landscape plan.
Okay.
Is that...
Okay, under four, B4 above, okay.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you wanted to add to that condition before, also, where it says, "Shall be provided and maintained in accordance with said landscape plan, including any tree protection measures and the berm." Because then if we don't do B9, the berm is left off.
Okay, and then I am in support of, let me go to this on page 6 of 12 of our conditions, 2, where are we here? E, paging system, page 6, it's number 3, paragraph 3. I am in support of removing the word "avoids," as Ms. Pujio said, so it would just read "applicant," will provide evidence, "employee paging system on proposed Lot 2 that excludes", I don't know, Ms. Pujio, if we need the word "outdoors," just amplified sounds, don't we want to just say amplified sounds, period? Yes, I see the applicant nodding. So, see, so just remove the word "avoids" and just say "excludes," would that, that work? Okay, that works, so I'm in support of that, too. I think those are it on my comments. Oh, I'm sorry, lastly, I want to reference something in our staff report, and I asked a question and made a comment about this. So on page 11 of our staff report, we have a couple of references to community, communities' aesthetics, and character of the area. And we need to make findings of compatibility with that. So my lingering concern, and this is really a note back to ABR, is I would like them to very carefully look at this, what appears, at least in the artistic rendering, this glossy, somewhat kind of very high-end sheen of an appearance, that to me is not compatible with Santa Barbara's aesthetics and community character. So if that can be softened a bit, it seems to me that then that would be compatible with our standards. I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Commissioner Schwartz, you're recommending that that be a comment back to ABR from the Planning Commission to consider?
Yes, please.
Versus something contained in the conditions, correct?
You know, I don't sense that I'm gonna get support from my commissioners on including that. I know we don't want to belabor the conditions of approval, but personally, I don't know how we could make the findings that I've just referenced without ABR taking another close look at that, the appearance, the aesthetics.
Okay, so that comment, that comment will get back to ABR for their consideration?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, if you include that in your motion...
A comment from Commissioner Schwartz.
A comment from Commissioner Schwartz?
I'd like to add my support for the comment.
Well, yes, it's from me, because I just said it, so I think that's pretty apparent. Thank you, Ms. Lodge.
Okay, so you will note that two commissioners made that comment?
You would include that in your motion, if you wish to pass that along?
I'm sorry?
You would include that in your motion, if you wish us to communicate that to the ABR.
Okay, so we need to put that in the motion, so, I think, any other comments, Commissioner Thompson?
Chair Campanella, you can, your motion can include that some commissioners would like to extend, it doesn't have to be a majority, but it should be in the motion in order to convey that to ABR.
Okay.
Not if we identify the specific commissioners that are putting forward that comment to ABR.
We can do that.
That's the discretion of the motion maker.
Which we've done plenty of times, I'm telling you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Okay, I support the subdivision, I support the development plans. I don't have a problem with the revised wording regarding the outdoor paging notification system, and I don't have a problem with eliminating B9 and taking care of it in condition B4. So I support it. I don't, I'm not gonna get into the architecture of the building, that's up to the ABR.
Are you still, is your light on? It's hidden, yeah, it is. I think you're on. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna, probably the simplest one to echo right now, is Commissioner Thompson, I'm in support of the project, the two development plans, and the tentative subdivision MAC, the environmental review and findings by Planning Commission, at this point, and the... the changes that were made in to B4. I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be an additional voice in favor of the architectural comments, that's up to ABR. But what I would like to do then is have someone who can make a motion that would include where we are and, and inclusions and modifications that were made, and we can just make sure we all agree at this point, before we take the vote, or before we have deliberation on that, that we have everything included. So I need a motion. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Ms. Thompson?
I move to approve the subdivision and the development plans, making the findings in the staff report with the changes that have been described by Mr. Vincent in our condition B4, and elimination of B9, and the conditions that were described by Commissioner Pujo in condition something 3, I don't know, page 6. E, E3 on page 6.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second then.
We have a second?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So were my colleagues not in support of a more general, fuller description of activities on the property and the hours that are referenced, which includes loading and unloading, loading? Nobody cares about the, if that's in or outside of the hours of that? Mr. Higgins, you, you prompted initially that, I think that line of inquiry, we're, about that?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned with it, but I don't, I don't know how to unpack that concern without introducing a new condition of approval. So I.
Any business is going to have deliveries all times of the day and night, and we don't try to condition all these other businesses as to what time of day or night they get their parts delivered, or when Marbord picks up their trash, or whatever. It, you know, it's just consistent with doing business.
I guess that.
In some neighborhoods, we have more concerns, and we have more residents come out to express those concerns to us than in other neighborhoods.
Yeah, I guess that's true with regard to most everything, except when they use the right of way.
Yeah, but if the commission wants to let that go, I'll let it go.
I'll, I'll let it go, too. I guess the concern is that they're gonna use the right of way, and that's not conducive to, I think, traffic flows down there, but I'm not gonna hang my hat on it.
Okay. I just want to make one thing clear if I can, Mr. Vincent, we eliminated B9, B10, which was proposed at one time. That's not part of our motion. There is no B10 anywhere. Thank you. Okay, we have, any other?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, first, Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion in a second.
Page 8 of the Planning Commission's staff report, bottom of the page 74, and this is part of the findings we have to make, compliance with the following summarized findings is required prior to approval of the PD development plan. Number 4, that the appearance of the developed site in terms of the arrangement, height, scale, and architectural style of the buildings, location of parking areas, landscaping, and other features is compatible with the character of the area and the city. I cannot make that finding, that the architectural style is compatible with the style of the city. Unless, I don't know, it's just, as I commented at the site, it looks like LA, the architect said, well, it was inspired by Italy. This is not Italy, it's not LA, it's Santa Barbara.
Mr. Chair?
If I can, I understand what Commissioner Lodge is saying, however, this decision, what we're, we're getting into a loop, I guess, in that the architectural board of review is gonna make a finding, they already did once, and they asked for some additional work to be done on the building. Now, we not agreeing with what their decision means, we have to come up with our own decision on compatibility, which is going to perhaps not be acceptable to ABR, certainly what they've approved already.
Mr. Chair, the way, the way planning commissions, in my experience, have handled this situation, the, and the way our, our dual design review process and land use process, where they run kind of in tandem, you know, on parallel tracks, is handled, is that design review gets it first, it comes to you with their comments and thoughts, and then it goes back to them, and the design is approved by them. The design has been modified by them, you heard from the applicant that the height has been reduced. Whether or not a commissioner gets to a point where they can actually make the necessary finding, we're not changing the findings, so if you can't make the finding, you can't make the finding. But the, the design review is largely relying upon the ABR to massage and get to a final place with the design. The design's not final. If the, if a individual commissioner or commissioners can't make the findings at this point with this design, then that's their prerogative. But it, I think that the, the commission as a whole, you can either make the finding, relying upon the planning, relying on the architectural board of review to make further refinements to the design. If you're not confident in making that finding, because you're not sure of what the ABR is gonna do when it goes back to them, then don't make that finding. But that's, that's typically how planning commissioners have handled this issue in the past, is either being confident on the design that's been proposed to you today, being confident on changes will be satisfactory with the ABR after they've seen the, the project again, or simply not making that finding, so.
Okay, I guess, precisely what I would do right now is, if Commissioner Lodge would like that included in the motion, she would have to request of the motion maker whether he would be willing to include it?
No, Mr. Chair, my, my point here is, if Commissioner Lodge can't make that finding, then she should not approve the project. But that doesn't mean that the rest of the commission can't approve the project based on the record before you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, just, just to add my thought on that, and this is from my perspective, this is an auto dealership sort of area with this overlay on the development plan. And yes, we have adjacent residential neighborhoods, but to tell you the truth, when I look at the other existing auto dealerships, I can't really fine tune how the design should change or not change, because there's other existing dealerships that are obviously in similar kind of style bulk and things. So, so for me, I think, at least from my perspective, I need to leave it to ABR to make that decision. And then just one other thing, 'cause I know there's a motion on the table, and Mr. Thompson, I, are you assuming, and you also made, I, I didn't see, when you first started, I just wanted to recognize that we also are making the finding that we're, the environmental review is adequate, right, MAC, so I didn't hear that part, just to get the record in there.
Right, that's part of the motion.
Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I, so if, if, with regard to the maybe, maybe not, condition B10, if I were the applicant, I'd wanna be able to provide constructive notice to the city, easement holder, or any of the neighbors that came by and wanted to complain about noise or light pollution later, if the city doesn't construct the bike path according to being consistent with some of the design issues that we're, we're finding today are adequate. So I'd want that if I was the applicant, and without it, I can't support the project. And I'm, and I'm, to clarify, your condition, B10, provides constructive notice that the city is responsible to construct the, the bike path in a way that's consistent with the environmental findings that we're making today.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment before I vote. I'm not gonna hold up my support of the project, but I want to be clear, I think it's important to have some facts on the table. This commission does forward comment and advisory remarks to our review boards, that's number one. We have done that many, many times in my years on this commission. And secondly, we do make the findings that pertain to a number of the findings also, so there's overlap between our findings and the review boards, including in the areas of design. Ms. Allen knows this, she's been before us many, many times over the years, so the findings in the development plan, the findings, this is C and D, are part of our obligations in making findings. So we don't just punt back to the review boards to say, we never touch size, bulk, scale, design. We do. That's part of compatibility findings, character consideration and consistency, along with general plan consistency. So I think it's important that that be on the record for what is the full set of responsibilities of our commission today and many other hearings. But again, it's not important enough for me to hold up this project, I am gonna support it, and I'm gonna support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for making the comment. Yes, you, Commissioner Thompson made the motion, the second was made by, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jordan, okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let's do a voice call on approval of the motion, if you can. Mr. Rodriguez, thank you.
Commissioner Higgins?
No.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
No.
Commissioner Campenella?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Okay, it's 5:2. Okay, thank you very much. There is a 10-day appeal period to, what's the date on that Monday, Julia, that would be 10 days up? 10-day appeal period from today. Thank you very much. Monday, the 18th, with notice of an appeal to the clerk's office, city clerk. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I can ask about the appeals.
Okay, we're still in session, if people, if you can, please, if you have a conversation, please, outside, not staff. Staff can stay. You can stay, you don't have to go outside and talk.
I couldn't.
That's okay. You can stay, you're dismissed. Okay, next is the administrative agenda, staff hearing office, liaison report.
Couple weeks ago, just a couple minor items of no note, other than it was two items in 17 minutes, so I'm keeping score on that, okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Lodge, anything?
Yes, the Historic Landmarks Commission has had some of the, the final details on the Natural History Museum. This is on, their signing program at the meeting of March 23rd. At that time, they discussed the fact that the sound wall, which we heard a lot about here, heard a lot from the neighbors, is in, and it's been landscaped, and everybody seems to be happy on that one. Yesterday's meeting of the HLC, April 6th, they had a presentation from a company that's putting up all these cellphone antennas, and they've come back with some really Santa Barbara-style supports and canisters to, to hold them. They really, they really listened to HLC. And the, the meeting was a little different from most that I, many that I've observed, where they're struggling with an architect who doesn't get it, and here where they had, had somebody really listen and got what they were after. And then the next project was a little building on Figueroa Street, 28 West Figueroa, it's a one-story building, it's gonna be taken down, but it was a two-story, and they were very pleased with the design, very, very simple, but very nice, sensitive, Santa Barbara-style building.
Okay, anyone else? Just at ABR, not, not really much went on, except some projects moving along, as I wouldn't have anything to report until probably next week, when I see the minutes of the 28th meeting. Any other comments? The, this is first Thursday again, so enjoy the activity and events, and we're adjourned until next Thursday, April 14th, at 1 o'clock. Have a nice weekend, everyone, thank you. And Ms. Galarte, thank you for estimating a 3:30 adjournment of the meeting, I appreciate that on you.
Wow.
What you, she did that, and what she says goes. Thank you very much, keep up the good work.